Good evening and welcome to the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive or watch the livestream via the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments. If you will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Beal. It's good to see you again. Would you please call Roll?
Mr. Schneer.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Mr. Suplack.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Ms. Harder.
Here.
And we excuse Mr. Fishman and Mr. Chinock this evening. Thank you, Ms. Beal. I am looking for a motion to accept tonight's documents and the record into the record and approve the meeting minutes from our meeting held August the 4th.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Harder.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to City Council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, the council receives a recommendation from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. There are no cases tonight eligible for the consent agenda. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. Tonight, we will go in agenda order, starting with swearing in and then continuing on with case number one. Anyone intending to address the commission on any of these administrative cases, please stand, raise your right hand, and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you. We will proceed with case one, Shahab Law Office Building at PID 273-004511 and 22-077 INF for an informal review. This application is a request for the construction of a one-story, 10,520-square-foot building for a law office on a 2.86-acre site, zoned planned commerce district, Thomas Kohler, Sub Area C. The site is located northwest of the intersection of Warner Temple with Emerald Parkway. Ms. Mullenax, welcome this evening. It's good to see you again, and I'll turn time over to you for our case presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. This is a request for informal review and non-binding feedback of a future final development plan for the Shahab Law Office. Development for the site follows the planned commerce district process shown before you. In 1996, 120 acres was rezoned and to the planned commerce district, Thomas Kohler.
I apologize, Ms. Mullenax, if I could pause you just for a moment. Excuse me, those in the audience, it is difficult and echoey in the chamber offices, which makes it very good to hear the speaker, but not as good to hear the speaker when there's other chatter. So if there are discussions needed, if you could step outside the doors, and then we welcome you back in. Ms. Mullenax, back to you.
Thank you. So in 1996, 120 acres were rezoned to planned commerce district, Thomas Kohler. This rezoning established the preliminary development plan and the development text. The site is located within Sub Area C of this development. The next step in the process is a final development plan, but tonight, the applicant is requesting an informal review to receive non-binding feedback on the proposed development. So this is an opportunity for applicants to gain feedback from the commission before submitting a formal final development plan application. The 2.86-acre site is located northwest of the intersection of Warner Temple Road and Emerald Parkway. The existing lot contains a row of mature trees and an existing shared-use path along the west property line. A 75-foot landscape and bike path easement, as well as a 30-foot utility easement, are along the western property line, and a City of Dublin 30-foot utility easement runs along the eastern and southern property lines. The existing conditions of the site are depicted on the screen and is the view from the corner of Warner Temple Road and Emerald Parkway. The vacant site is comprised of one parcel, which is proposed to be split into two parcels to construct a single-story, 10,526-square-foot law office and fitness center on the southern proposed parcel. The applicant is meeting the maximum lot coverage and the density requirement for Sub Area C. If the lot split occurs, staff is concerned that the proposed northern lot will be challenging to develop and meet development standards due to its narrowness and ability to meet the building and pavement setbacks. So the commission is requested to provide comments on the viability of the remaining lot. A conceptual site plan has been provided by the applicant. A single-story building is proposed here on the southeast corner with frontage on Emerald Parkway and Warner Temple Road and site access from each road. Internal drives are proposed connecting each of the access points. Staff is concerned with the two proposed drive aisles due to the amount of pavement and the car-centric design, and would encourage the applicant to proceed with just one of the drive aisles. If the drive aisle is to remain over the proposed lot split line, the applicant would need to pursue a minor text modification at the final development plan stage to permit pavement within the side and rear yard setback. Staff is concerned with the proposed Emerald Parkway curb cut as it deviates from the preliminary development plan, which shows the access split between the proposed site and the Camden Professional Office property to the north. Staff is supportive of the Emerald Parkway access point, as shown on the preliminary development plan, and with that, the applicant can either proceed with the curb cut as shown in the preliminary development plan, or it can be removed from the proposal, or a cross-access can be obtained to the site from the property owner to the north. The applicant is proposing 43 parking spaces, which meets the requirement. The majority of parking is located west of the building, as well as two parking bays forward of the building, and a two-car garage is within the building. Internal sidewalks are provided along the facades of the building. Staff would like to encourage the applicant to consider pedestrian connections from the front entryway to the signalized intersection and to the adjacent shared-use path on-site. Lastly, the applicant will need to provide landscaping details at the final development plan stage that meet the Emerald Parkway landscape plan, the development text, and the code. Conceptual architecture has been provided by the applicant. The building is comprised of two wings and a rotunda. The wing pointing west will contain law offices. The rotunda will contain the main lobby area, and then the wing pointing north will contain the fitness center. The applicant is proposing architecture and materials that are consistent with the development text. We can see here that mechanical units will be fully screened by the building architecture and meet the screening requirements. The applicant may wish to consider a second story for the proposed building as they consider modifications to the site layout, and that would also help to establish more room on-site, what is not required. It is requested that the commission provide feedback on which type of signs would be preferred for this development. The development text affers to the standard zoning code for signs. The applicant is permitted to have either two wall signs or two ground signs due to its corner lot location. Staff has prepared the following discussion questions for the commission, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicants in attendance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullenax. And we will handle questions on this item separately. Looking to the commission for any questions for staff on this application. Mr. Schneer.
Question for staff or council. To what extent, this application is just for the southern parcel, and we're not passing on dividing the lot for the parcel. So to what extent should we be, or should we take into account anything happening on the north, on the northern parcel, or, I mean, you know, the elephant room is, okay, that is going to be a narrow lot, but legally, are we...
Sure. So you can consider that because prior to this being developed, that lot's going to be split, and that's the plan that they've brought forward. So you can consider the fact that perhaps the building too big is going to leave too small of a remainder lot. That's perfectly fine to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Suplack?
The current proposed curb cuts, I guess I'm just looking for guidance on, are they already established by plans we've put in place?
So the preliminary development plan does identify a curb cut on Emerald Parkway, as well as on Warner Temple Road. The curb cut proposed for Warner Temple Road is in spirit with the preliminary development plan, and then the Emerald Parkway curb cut deviates from the preliminary development plan, but both are shown on that PDP. Both are not currently in existence, so they would be new.
Thank you. Mr. Way.
I'd like to follow on with that, just in terms of the actual functionality of the curb cut on Warner Temple. I see that's a, it's a right out, and then it's obviously a left turn in. Is Warner Temple really set up for that movement? Is that a left-turn lane? It shows an arrow on it, but right now, it's not a left-turn lane. Is that correct?
So in discussions with transportation and mobility, the applicant is showing a right-in, right-out, excuse me, and a left-in, and it is set up for that. If you have any additional questions, I will defer to Michael Hendershot.
So is that, so is it the existing left-turn lane that takes you onto Emerald Parkway? Is that, I guess that's what I'm getting at. It's, there's already a turn lane there for Emerald Parkway, and this is just basically co-op to make the turn into the site. Would that be correct?
I believe so, but I will...
I think that's, Mr. Henshaw just went to go get him, I believe.
I saw he wasn't sitting there, and I was afraid to ask that question, but...
Question going to the development text. In this area, is there already a gas station or an automobile repair facility?
A gas station, not to my awareness, no. I believe there is an auto repair shop further north, but yeah.
Thank you.
That has different zoning, though. That would be, the auto repair shop is, has a different zoning than what this is.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission for staff? Okay, pending Mr. Hendershot's reappearance. Here he is. We'll pause just a moment. Just in time, Mr. Hendershot. So we have a question on the left-hand turn, and so, Mr. Way, if you want to restate your question for Mr. Hendershot.
Left, oh, so thank you. Is the left off of Warner Temple into the site utilizing the existing left-turn lane that takes you onto Emerald Parkway? Is that, is that the existing condition? Is there an existing left-turn lane right now that takes you from Warner Temple to Emerald Parkway?
I believe so, yes.
Right. So this is just, this site then is taking advantage of that?
Yes, there's an existing curb cut that would be utilized for this full access.
And so, just in terms of traffic movement, that's an acceptable thing to take a left-turn lane early off of a left?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. All right, is the applicant here? Welcome. If you'd like to come up, if you have a statement or presentation at all, you're not required, but you're always welcome to. If I could have you enable that microphone by pressing the button, wait for the green light to turn on, and then state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Gus Shahab. I live at 6618 Truckplace, Dublin, Ohio, and this development proposal is to house our law office. I've been an attorney for almost 30 years now. In the last 30 years, I've practiced downtown, initially in the brewery district, and then we moved to the Capitol Square. So we are in the building, the high-rise building between the Ohio Theater and the Sheraton. We would like to move to our entire operation to the Dublin area. We're been citizens of Dublin since 2002, and this will be a great opportunity for our family. My wife is here, by the way. She's, she's our director of operations. She's, she's the person who everybody's scared of in my, in my office. But the, the idea is to bring our employees and increase our staff. We are very limited downtown in terms of the space that we currently have, and this is a proposal for a 6,000-square-foot for the law office side. So it will be a tremendous opportunity for us to grow our staff, grow our, our practice, and to, to have a very nice facility to practice law and work. Our specialty is immigration law, and when I started to practice immigration law back in 1993, there was only four of us in the Columbus area that practiced in this area. Now, there is about 100 immigration lawyers in the Columbus area about 30 years later, and that's due to the growth of the city of Columbus in demographics, in technology, and we are, we service those sectors. We're primarily an employment immigration law firm. That means that we service high-tech companies, engineering, architects, as well as colleges and universities. So I think our move to Dublin, Dublin being sort of the Silicon Valley of the city of Columbus, I think we were in the right place. So we were very excited about moving here and being part of the city of Columbus. Part of the development is also for a fitness facility, as you saw, and we're extremely excited about that, too. We think that's something that is very badly needed in the area. We don't know how the concept is going to be, whether it's going to be a, you know, an access through a key card or actually from, you know, certain hours, but we would like to have showers in the fitness facility. I think that's something that will be very welcome. We don't know the internal circulation as far as the concept of the fitness facility yet, but it's about 3,000 square feet right now. So with that, we, we are here to get your blessings and hear your comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, looking to the commission for questions for the applicant. Mr. Way, do you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for coming before us tonight. I guess the basic question I have is, why aren't you developing the entire parcel? Why are you thinking of subdividing it?
So the, the, the corner site is very attractive in terms of its location, and, you know, it's sort of the major corner coming from 270 up Emerald Parkway. So it's pretty costly in terms of the cost of the entire parcel, and we approached the owner, and, you know, he proposed to split the site so that we can utilize our, our, our use for the one portion that we're interested in, and the remainder will be with the owner to sell to another user.
So, but, but in addition to your law office, you're adding the fitness center. So there's, basically, you're developing two uses. And so I guess my question is, why not just add another use, a tenant, and build one building that satisfies all of the site?
I'm confused. So one building, meaning at the adjacent site?
I'm saying, make, you know, utilize the entire site, make the building bigger, and have more than two tenants.
If I could interject, what I believe Mr. Way is asking for is a master plan on the entire facility.
Okay, I see, yes.
Well, and as opposed to two separate buildings, maybe it's just being one building and three tenants or whatever that would work.
Based on the, on our budget, we feel that the proposed L-shaped building fits our needs as far as the, the uses that we're planning, and I think if we would endeavor into going to the other parcel, I think the, the cost is going to be much harder than what we can, what we can afford. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Ms. Harder.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Just on, piggybacking on that, I heard a little bit about the idea of possibly doing a second floor. Would that be, I guess, when we're looking at the large piece of parcel, if you're thinking about a second floor, why not think about making your, instead of the L shape, making it larger into that other parcel instead of going higher? So I guess the first question is, what are your considerations about the second floor, and would that be amenable to move it into that other parcel? Thank you.
So our, our current proposal is for a one-story building, so we're not really thinking about doing a second story. I think that was a comment by staff as a consideration to us, but because of the uses are so different from each other, one is a, is a law office, and as you know, in law offices, we require quiet and concentration. It's just, we can't have a fitness center on top or other way around, you know. They're not compatible uses, plus the fitness center is 3,000 square feet while the office is 6,000 square feet. So if you would put them on top of each other, you'd have to have, I mean, it just wouldn't work. And we feel because of the layout of the site being on a corner, to maximize the visibility of both uses on both sides, I think that would work very well for us in terms of, of visibility, and that would not happen if it was a one-story building.
Other questions from the commission? Ms. Harder.
I just had a quick question about signage. We're asked to look at that as well, too. Do you have a consideration, what your thoughts are about that?
We would prefer to have a wall-mounted sign. I think it would be, it would serve us better also in terms of visibility as well. The precedence is there across the street and catty corner everywhere. So we feel, we feel that we should be treated the same way as others have been treated and have a wall-mounted sign.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. What is the expectation for the two parking garage doors on the backside of the building?
Basically, it's just a convenience for us and also to create some storage space. Because of the, the building is, the way it's laid out, there's very little storage space. So the parking garages would be to, to utilize that, that area for any possible storage that we need. You know, law offices, we produce a lot of paper. And currently, just an idea, we utilize a service to house our unused files, and the cost per month is something like 300 bucks, where we would store that in our facility. So the idea is to use it as storage and also as a parking for convenience for the, some partners in the, in the firm.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the commission? So thank you very much. So the way that the process works this evening, we asked questions, and we may come up with a few more, but typically speaking, we will close the question session. We will then go into deliberation. We will then come forward with a motion on what we're looked, it's actually not a formal motion because this is an informal review. We will provide feedback with the governing items that staff has given, especially that last one, any other considerations. After we deliberate, we will invite you back up and ask if you have any clarity that you seek on any of those items, and we will proceed from there.
Thank you very much.
And thank you again.
Gus was going to introduce me. I'm sorry. I'm Charlie Driscoll. I'm with Edwards. I'm the developer. I wonder if I could just take a few minutes to talk about the access question?
Certainly.
Can we have the site plan come up? So we actually have a fairly serious access problem on this site. The Warner Temple side works fine, but there's no way to get out toward Emerald. And on Emerald, the original plan was to have this right-in, right-out straddle the property line to the north. And if you look at that site plan, there's a big old dumpster right there in the structure. So that does not seem feasible at all to us. So on our plan, we're showing that, that access, that right-in, right-out entirely on our site. Gets it away from the dumpster, and everything works. So I think staff agrees that there's a problem, but we don't agree on the solution. Staff would like to utilize the original right-in, right-out that runs into the dumpster and figure out some way to get the property owner to move the dumpster and give us an easement, which I don't feel optimistic about either one of those. So I think that's going to be impossible for us to achieve, and so if we can't do that, then we have no access. So our solution, which does work, just moving that right-in, right-out over 12 feet, and then everything works, and it's entirely in our property. And, but staff is concerned that this small adjustment would impact the left-turn lane onto Warner Temple. Some people on Emerald coming down south on Emerald and turning left on Warner Temple. They have, right now, they have a stacking room of 279 feet, which would allow about 14 cars to stack in that turn lane. And if we make our 12-foot change, there would still be room for 13 cars to stack there. And if, if you think of this as a football field, the original line is 93 yards from the goal line. We want to move to 89 yards from the goal line. So it's a pretty small change. So this turn lane on Emerald has been here for 25 years now, so I think we are seeing what the real impact is, and we've driven by it numerous times over those years. I was here for the original zoning, and I've never seen cars stacked up turning left there. In fact, I went over tonight and spent a half hour there from 5:30 to 6:00, and I would say the average change at a light is two cars, and it was a maximum of four, and sometimes there's none. And you would think that's rush hour, that would be the busiest time. And, you know, as you probably realize, almost all the traffic wants to go south to Tuttle Crossing, at the interchange, or else they want to go north to the, most of the residential areas in Dublin. So I hope you agree that this very small change can solve an unanticipated access problem, you know, at no cost to the city. The city approved the dumpster in that driveway. The city approved that site plan for the office buildings next door without using the access that was on the original plan. You know, if the city would have enforced that plan when those guys came in, it wouldn't be a problem. But now it is a problem, because I got a dumpster in the way, and I don't own it. So it's a major problem for this user and also for future users. So I appreciate your thoughts on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hendershot, welcome back.
Thank you, and I apologize for earlier for stepping out, but, so a couple of things on this. So this was in coordination with our Transportation and Mobility Division. So looking at the preliminary development plan shows this access point straddling the north property line. So that condition or that location, staff is not supportive of, but we're also being respectful for a decision that was made and approved previously. So from our standpoint, you know, shifting this any further south is just further perpetuating a condition that we're not supportive of. The other concerns that we have is just potential conflict points. If you have a vehicle leaving the site, if there is stacking that's backing up in this area, that's introducing an additional conflict point, and then also for a vehicle leaving the site, potentially traversing multiple lanes to get into that southbound left-turn lane. So again, just the location as it is, whether it's 12 feet further south or on this property line, is not in an ideal condition, and that's largely why we're not supportive of shifting this any further to the south, even if it's 12 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. Mr. Way.
So what's the possibility of moving the dumpster on the parcel to the north and accommodating the split entry?
Rephrased, have we had any discussions with that parcel owner?
The city has not. I can't speak for the applicant, but we would just have to work with that northern property owner to relocate that dumpster and just coordinate to, you know, have it relocated appropriately to accommodate the new curb cut.
Is there another location on that site for the dumpster that would be, work appropriately or conveniently?
There, on the northern site, there are multiple dumpster locations. Staff would have to look at where this dumpster could be relocated, but there are multiple dumpsters on site just with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullenax. Mr. Suplack?
Confirm for me that, is that building there just to the north of this? Is that yet built?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you. All right, we will enter into deliberations at this time. Ms. Mullenax, if I could have you present the five questions that we are asked to consider with this particular application. And we'll just go through the commission in line. We'll do all of the questions at once. Ms. Harder, would you like to start us out this evening?
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward this evening. I think it's a great opportunity for the city. I like the idea of the mixed use. The site, I'm, I'm going to read through here a little bit and then kind of go from there a little bit. So with my notes and matching them up. But I would suggest that, you know, contacting the neighborhoods around and making sure that everybody's kind of on the same page with that. And then also being a little concerned, I am a little concerned about inside. Any kind of exercise facility can be loud and, and how you're going to be working towards that. I like the idea of the minimal of, of signage. So I'm not opposed to it being on the wall, on the walls and so forth. I think that is fine. The development, which is right. Then I would like the idea of the architecture being all around and making sure that every site is something that is clean and, and amenable of that. I'm not sure why you have the four cars that are kind of parked on the side near the patio. I think that that takes away from that patio experience. And I think also landscaping around there is, is important. I'm not opposed to the garages. I think by having the patio there and the garages, it opens up an opportunity of cohesiveness and, and opportunities that way, too. And again, you know, thinking outside of the box with the landscaping. I didn't see what your thoughts were about benches and things of that sort. Find, ground findings and walls. I'm sorry, I'm reading as I'm going. Let's see. And then also, I'm, I'm, the big talk around is about solar panels and also other solar ideas that are around. And if, if that comes, what you, that you're taking advantage of the opportunity of how to conceal those and so that they look very nice and so forth. And then I am concerned about the driveway and considering the wall sign I mentioned that was fine, too. And again, the lot maybe, I am concerned about the other parcel just sitting out there and not what to do with. And I think that's going to be a concern around to keep talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. Mr. Way?
Thank you. We often get proposals like this where there's a, a site and only a, a portion of the site is being planned at, at the time that we're being asked to review it. And it's, it's very, it's for me and perhaps the other commissioners, it's very difficult just to understand the context. So I'm struggling a little bit with this, the split and having a site that we don't really know what might happen. And I see that site as being extremely small. And I don't know what would really fit on it with the parking that would be required to support it. So I just, I can't, I, it's hard to evaluate this proposal without understanding the entire parcel. I do like the idea that you're trying to embrace the corner. I think that makes perfect sense. And I do also like the fact that it is a multi-tenant building, so it's kind of a mix of uses. I do, one of the, the things I was struggling with was the parking for the fitness center is minimal where the fitness center is. It's mostly in the back. So I'm worried about the distribution of parking, especially related to entrances to the lobby. I'm assuming the fitness center will get a lot of movement in and out all day long. Your law office may be, people just, I don't know how often people come and go, but I could see the, the law office being less volume. And so the parking could be more discreet, whereas the fitness center has high volume and you need the parking related to that in the right way. So I think that's something that you need to explore a little bit more. I agree with staff that this whole site circulation thing to make everything work, you're putting a lot of paving on the site, almost duplicative of what you really need. And so I think trying to, again, I think it goes back to looking at the whole site and how it gets developed over time. And maybe some of that can be sorted out. So I appreciate your, your emphasizing the corner. I think that's important. And I think as you develop the site with landscape and everything else, that, that would be really good to reinforce. I think we really need to see more about what's going to happen with the entire site and not just the corner site. And again, I, I wouldn't be, if you introduced another tenant and made it a bigger building, and I take it you're not going to do a two-story building, so that's, that's fine, you've said that. But it could be a one-story with another addition and then another tenant. And really then think about how parking works and access and circulation. So I think those are the, the kind of the site planning things that I, I would like you to think harder about as you work through the process. That's coming right. I'm getting ready. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these. So the, the whole architectural character and all that, I, conceptually, I don't have a problem with where you're going. I think, you know, materials and all that, I think that, that, you know, there's more work to be done on that. But I think, I don't see any red flags at this point. And I'll let my architects on the commission say more about that. Signs, again, without actually seeing proposals, it's, it's hard to make any kind of definitive, give you any feedback on that. I mean, we, we approve both. And when you drive around the city, you see, in fact, I was just on Avery Road the other day, Muirfield Avery, and, and driving down and thinking how well that corridor has matured. And all of the businesses have this beautiful little sign, you know, ground sign out in front of it, well landscaped. And it all works really well. And I just say that was a success of the city. So either one of these could be done well, ground or building mounted. So I, again, I would look for that proposal to get, pass judgment on that. And again, the, do I support the creation of two individual lots? I could, but I don't know what's happening under the lot. So if, if you came in with a proposal that showed full development, I think we could give you much better feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Suplack?
I, I concur in large part with Mr. Way. He articulated a wealth of concerns right now about the layout, right? Conceptually, the architecture is attractive and doing, doing the right things to weave into the neighborhood, right? The adjacent buildings around it. The layout is worrisome for a couple of different regards. One is the adjacent site and what remnant are we leaving there and what can that become, right? And unfortunately, we get it up here, that's outside your purview as far as your project and your, you know, your baby, you're, you're sort of grooming here. But at the same time, we have to protect all this land in the city, even outside of it. So I, I think there's work to do to at least, you know, provide some forethought about how that potentially develops and develops in concert with your site. Whether or not that happens quickly doesn't matter as much as it is, you know, thought about and planned. I also happen to concur very strongly with Mr. Way on that fitness center tenant space, whatever that is, right? That function, the, the distribution of the parking doesn't quite work well for it, right? Just the way the la, the site plan is laid out at present. There is a frequency and rotation, a cyclic rotation on that that is, I think, different than your, you know, nine-to-five-ish, right? You guys work way harder than that, so it's longer than nine-to-five. But nine-to-five-ish on the business side to, to the point, right? Like, so there, there's a, a different pace to those parking spaces. And so the, the volume of those parking spaces, I think, matters. And how that all relates and works with all this has got to be thought about really, really robustly. And number three, I, ground signs or wall signs, I think they're, they, they both could be appropriate. You're, I think you're setting up the way with the canopies that, you know, it kind of feels like they want signs on said canopies, right? Like, that's, that's the language that's setting up. So that's the one that becomes the most, most readily recognizable immediately now at the stage of this, this design. But ground signs could be attractive as well. Architecturally, I'm just going to say this relative to certain things I would advocate for, right? The palette is attractive. It's a good set of materials. You're doing some nice things with it. I, I would advocate for a couple of things architecturally, just to touch on it real quick. One, those canopies that pin off the building, tiebacks would be lovely and just add a level of articulation, right? It's early. Two is the rotunda. I worry, I, again, you're addressing the corner. It's, it's a fantastic sort of moment relative to that corner. The rotunda does something sort of, I'm going to say sort of Frankenstein's itself, right? So it has the round face, but then it becomes straight walled and the roof kind of is geometry that is made to work. I think the, the design there wants to clearly differentiate the rotunda from the walls that it joins, right? So that'll be, they, they gotta, they gotta miss one way or another. And then it really wouldn't detract from your layout as it currently is. But I think it's just, you know, a, a different opportunity. And then, of course, that adjusts your roof line in that space as well. And Mrs. Harder sort of touched on it about four-sided architecture. The backside is just the, the stucco, IFIS, whatever that is. It, it needs, it needs some love as well, a little bit more than what it already is so that it does have a little more of a four-sided architecture, like the adjacent buildings and, you know, the broader region around, around the area. Relative to the two individual lots specifically, again, I, I think it's, the worrisome part for us is that that lot gets pinched to the size that it's unusable in this exercise. And then we have land in the city that can't, can't become something. And then I don't have, I don't have other considerations to tie in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Schneer?
I'll walk through the questions. With respect to the second story, gee, if you don't want a second story, I understand that. And I would encourage you to somehow work with staff to, to come up with some configuration with the drive aisles so that you, we, you don't get forced into a second story, which has a whole different set of economics. I, I like the architecture. I'll leave it to my architect colleague to point out what was obvious, but I couldn't, I couldn't articulate it, which is the roof, just, it, it wants to be symmetrical, but it turns out to be asymmetrical. And there is a rotunda. I, I think it complements the area because there's a rotunda in that other little shopping center where the, I think there's a restaurant in there. So I, I think the architecture is, is fine. I, I think the architecture is good. I don't mean to downplay it. I'm not bothered either way on, on the, on the signage. My concern is the, the two lots issue. I'm just concerned about backing into a legal issue where we address the one lot, it creates an orphan lot. An applicant comes in to develop the orf, that lot. We take it as is and there is like literally nothing that, that we would approve. And I'm not predisposed to saying that, but hypothetically, nothing works for us on that lot. And, and now you've got an applicant, you've got a concern of undertaking or whatever that, you know, we've denied him the rights to, to, you know, their property rights. So it, it backs us into a, a corner in, for the future. I don't know if a master plan, you know, resolves that because it's, you know, it's not binding. This is not a, a, you know, case first impression for us to be sure. But there, there has to be some thought given to that, to that orphan, potentially orphan lot. But, but I commend you on the design and we would love to see you here in Dublin.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. I'm going to go a little out of order with the questions. I'm going to start with the lot creation because Mr. Schneer started down this path. We see applications all the time and they're pinched. You have the luxury of not being pinched on this particular parcel. And the conversation usually goes, well, I can't meet this requirement because... And we're forced to either tell the person, well, I'm sorry, you can't build here at all. Or we set precedent by cutting corners. And no one expects Dublin to cut corners on every application. And so, that being said, one of the items that the layout, I think, provides some opportunity for is, one of the pleasures of driving down most of our larger roads, Emerald Parkway, every Muirfield, is you're not looking at a sea of parking lots. And it's a very different experience if you're driving, driving down Sawmill and you're looking at parking lot and then building. And so we purposely move parking to the rear of the building so that it's a luxurious drive. You actually want to be on the road. It's not just get me to where I'm going and get me off the road. And so with that, those parking spots, they're adjacent to the, the more populated thoroughfares. I would encourage that parking to move interior. The four-sided architecture has already been touched on. It's, it makes the building aesthetically pleasing from both the people who are driving by and not patronizing the business and those people who are actually paying to support the business. I am concerned about the interior parking, not the law office, but because when we're looking at planning, we're looking at what future uses could occupy that building, which is why my earlier comment about how many automobile, automobile repair and gas stations there are. In the development text, there is a statement that says the maximum number of freestanding restaurants within the entire 118.7 acre development shall be limited to five. And there shall be no more than one gas station and one automobile repair facility. And so the interior parking, if, you know, you've been in Dublin since, I believe, 2002, so I don't expect that you would go anywhere soon. But if the business grew and you outgrew the building and you moved and now the owner or yourself are shopping for new tenants, I wouldn't want necessarily a, a building that has been beautifully crafted and complimentary to the adjacent uses to, for an automotive user to come in and say, well, it's in the development text that we're allowed to have a automobile repair shop. And this one's set up perfectly because it has interior parking stalls. And so that's my concern. Again, not a concern with a law office use, but from a planning perspective, we do have to consider future uses as well as present uses. The only other items that I had, you know, I, I echo the master plan with only a, a portion of the parcel. That's not necessarily your responsibility. If you're purchasing something, then you plan on developing that item. But from the current owner perspective, having a master plan of, well, this is what I could market this extra acre to. This is how it could work. It doesn't need to be locked in stone. It doesn't need to have a user right now, but something that is feasible so that we have some level of confidence that we're not going to have that applicant who comes forward and says, I can't meet the requirements. And, well, now they have an acre that's completely undeveloped. Other than that, I think you've done a remarkable job. You know, I, we like to say that there are different phases of the, the process. Right now, we're crayons on paper. That's what we're doing. We're kind of doing the broad strokes. We have a vision. We, we're not investing a ton, a ton, a ton of money and time at this point in the process, but enough to actually say this could work. And then we get to do blow blocks and Lego blocks to kind of refine what this looks like. With those items addressed, are there any other items that the commission first wants to comment on? Mr. Way?
This isn't new, but I just want to reinforce, going back, several people have said this needs to be a four-sided building. And I think what that means is that I don't think we would support IFIS in the back at the ground level, something that you can touch. That's the material that you want out of, out of the way. So I just wanted to say specifically, that's a material that we would be very challenged to approve at the ground level.
Agreed. Any final comments from the commission? I'd like to invite the applicant up to see if you need any clarity on any of the items today. And then, of course, we'll, we'll have a closing statement.
I'd like to address the point with Ms. Call about the, the potential future use as an automotive use because of the limitation text that you referred to. Could we, to, to eliminate that issue, because I don't think anybody wants to see an automotive use, you know, at that corner. I, I wouldn't want to see it myself. I live a mile and a half away from this, this lot. Could we have a further limitation in this development to exclude those uses? those uses?
We would need a minor text modification to the development text. And so that affects 117 acres. So if there are multiple users, then that could affect more than just this smaller parcel.
Okay, I see. Is, are there other undeveloped lots in that 117 acres?
I would have to defer to staff.
We can look into that. And we could also look into, we've done text modifications for subareas of specific sites, so we might be able to accommodate that request. Yeah.
So that could be resolved?
Could mitigate that concern.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Then the, the, the issue with the, I think the way that it was talked about distribution of the parking for the fitness center, the concern was about the, the distance people would be walking in from the parking to the fitness. I'm just gonna make a small joke. If you're gonna go to the fitness center, come in, come in.
Be surprised at how many people take the elevator up, apply the stairs to go to the fitness center.
That's why we don't want a second floor. So you're familiar with the Lifetime Fitness? I mean, it's a humongous facility and the parking is incredibly huge. I worked out at that facility for years. And sometimes when you come in and there's a lot of parking spots that are taken up front, you end up in the back and you walk, you know? So I think the concern, I mean, this is a small lot. This is 1.86 acre and a lot of it is taken up by the pedestrian easement and so forth. So I think that the walking, I, I don't want to minimize that point, but I just wanted to really put that into realistic sort of terms, that walking just a little bit is, to go to a fitness center, I don't know that that's gonna be a huge concern. But we also were told to put the building closer by staff to the roadway in order to eliminate any parking that is, to your point, Ms. Call, that's very visible from the street. And we, we like that a lot as a, as a, as a, an applicant. So if we wanted to redistribute the parking, there will be, unfortunately, you know, a propensity to put more parking towards the street because the site is so small. So I hope that you would take a look at that comment and that concern in, in, in those additional considerations that I'm putting forth here. In terms of the right-in, right-out, we met with the property owner to the north. We had a virtual meeting because of the pandemic. And what he said, he was going to look into it. And I, I don't know how many months ago that we had this meeting, six months ago. And since then, the property owner, Mr. Driscoll, has sent several emails and the response back is really, honestly, just excuses. I don't think the property owner to the north wants to work with us. I, I think we're sort of in a situation where their plan was approved by the city, where an access point should have been constructed when he built his subdivision. And now we're having to pay for, excuse me for saying this, but for the city's inability to build the site pursuant to your master plan. So we're having to bear the consequence of that. So I just wanted to take that into account that the, you know, we're, we're not here to, to, to be blamed for what's going on, but we're willing to move the access 12 feet to the south. And I don't know how that could be a huge negative to the, to the traffic circuit and, and so forth. I happen to be a, a transportation engineer in my prior life, myself. I worked for the Ohio Department of Transportation. I'm licensed professional engineer in the state of Ohio. And I would like to offer that moving 12 feet is half of a car length. A car length is 20 feet. And when you're moving the driveway only 12 feet, the impact is very minimal on the stacking, the left turn stacking, and on the, the concern with the weaving from staff about cars coming out and having to try to traverse the lanes to turn left. So I would hope that either you help us with the property owner to the north to facilitate that right-in, right-out on the adjoining property line. And we're willing to do that. It's just that we don't have the ability to, to force him. And the solution being put forth here is to just move the driveway 12 feet to the south.
Mr. Hendershot, if I could, thank you. Do you have any final items that you want clarity on?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any final items that you would like clarity on?
Just wanted to address the issue of the, the noise from the, the, the workout facility. I think most of the noise usually comes from maybe, you know, hard rock and roll speaker, you know, music that's being played. And that we will be very considerate in, in those regards. So we will not have any loud music that's played. We also may be in a position to have an exercise facility, kind of like what you have in the hotels, where it's mostly cable-oriented workout equipment that doesn't really create a lot of noise. Not like, you know, a more like a powerlifting kind of a, a gym. We, we wanted this to be a neighborhood-oriented gym. So we wanted to address the needs of everybody in the neighborhood. So I think it's gonna be closer to a, you know, like a large hotel workout facility, but full service in those terms too. So people can come to the workout, you know, to, to the fitness center, work out, take a shower and go to work after that. Or come in the middle of the day and then, and shower and go back to work.
Mr. Hendershot, can you state the city's desire for any egress-ingress on the Emerald Parkway Drive? What the city's desire would be for any type of access there?
Perhaps it's better put, what's ideal state there? Not just the ingress-egress, but also we're going to that adjacent parcel, having potentially a second access point out, right? All of the above.
Yeah. So and another consideration too to think about is just Washington Township Fire Department as far as what they need as far as access, a number of access points. So that's a consideration. That's something that at the staff level, we discuss, we coordinate that with Washington Township Fire Department as we're reviewing these. Again, in our discussion with transportation mobility, they were not supportive of shifting this access point down. I know it's 12 feet, but again, it goes back to, as it's shown in the preliminary development plan, that's in a non-ideal location to begin with because it's within the influence of that intersection. We certainly understand, you know, the challenges if the property owner to the north is not willing to work with this applicant. But I believe the intent all along was for cross-access to be provided so that the northern access point on the north property could be utilized to be able to turn southbound on Emerald Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot.
And separate question, and it might not be you, more broadly, how, how do we engage with this? Can, can we influence?
Are you talking the, the adjacent parcel owner?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
We, we could direct staff to work with the applicant and the adjacent parcel owner to see if they can come to some type of compromise or agreement. All right.
If I could make one other statement. So again, just from our standpoint, you know, engineering, planning, transportation, mobility. So we certainly understand the challenges with the site layout and access points and access management. But we're also looking out for the public roadway network and the health and safety of the public. And just again, in our professional opinion, we don't think moving this access point is something that we would be supportive of.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. And I'd like to remind, remind the commission, you did receive one public comment on this item. Has there been any other public comment that has come in during?
No.
Okay. And I apologize. Was there anyone in the commission, in, in the audience today who would like to make public comment on this particular application? Usually the groups. We only have three cases tonight. There are three groups. And so I kind of inferred, probably shouldn't have. All right. Well, we, we would like to say, you know, this is, this is an opportunity. It's an amazing use in this particular area. I think it would be complimentary to the surrounding area. I don't think anyone is saying, no, don't build a law office, which we hear often on different types of uses. So we believe it could be complimentary and it could be designed. So I think that we have the broad strokes, the crayons on paper still moving. But I don't think that we're far from where we need to be in order for, for this to be an acceptable layout, an acceptable building, and of course, an acceptable use on the parcel. So thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing you back at future steps in the process.
We appreciate all your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item is Valentina's Master Sign Plan, case 22-095 MSP. This is master sign, sign plan. The awning edge sign is permitted only, oh, sorry, wrong agenda. Sorry, paper. There we go. All right. This application is a request for an awning edge sign, projecting sign, and wall signs for an existing tenant space on approximately 1.3 acre site, Zone Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood. The site is located southeast of the intersection of Riverside Drive with Bridge Park Avenue. Mr. Henshaw, good to see you again. It's like been 24 hours.
It's not been long. Yeah.
Turn the time over to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, good evening. Before you tonight is an amendment to an approved master sign plan for the Valentina's Restaurant. This site is represented by the star at the northwest corner of Building B2 in the Bridge Park Development. This tenant space is located at the intersection of Riverside Drive and Bridge Park Avenue and is zoned within the Scioto River Neighborhood. This site, this tenant space was last before the Plan and Zone Commission in October of 2021, where a minor project was approved for tenant improvements. This included facade and site improvements for this tenant space. Showing the screen are two elevations, one from the north, which is the Bridge Park Avenue. You can see the metal, the black metal canopy entry, which does house what was conceptual signage at the time. And then on the right, you'll see the Riverside Drive elevation. And it is the enclosed indoor/outdoor patio space with an awning cover to replicate what's happening further south along this elevation. So as identified in the staff report, showing the screen are two examples of approved sign types within the block B master sign plan. The canopy edge sign and the awning sign are both estate-approved. The way that these master sign plans are written for all the blocks within the Bridge Park Development is that once the master sign plan is approved, signs do not, signs that meet these requirements do not have to come back to ART or Plan and Zoning Commission. It's only on rare occasions where there may be amendments to master sign plans for specific tenants that they may come back to Plan and Zoning Commission for review. So the reason these two are on the screen is because the proposed sign type is kind of a combination between the two based on staff's review. Canopy edge sign on the left is typically a channel letter sign that is mounted on top, below, or on the face of a metal horizontal canopy. And then on the right, you'll see an awning sign. This is typically a fabric awning with a vinyl or graphic printed on, on the face of it. So a brief overview, this is an amended found development, amended master sign plan, excuse me, for an awning edge sign. And this also includes a sign package, which contains a canopy edge sign and a projecting sign. Starting with the proposed awning edge sign, this is a 42 square foot sign that is 12 feet, 10 inches in height. And that is measured from the top of the sign to the established grade. It is constructed of a two and a half inch deep reverse channel letter. So the face is actually imprinted in two and a half feet from the outer edge, the foremost edge of the sign. It is painted white on the outside with the PMS 417C on the inside. That would be a deep or a darker yellow-green color, a little darker than the, than what is shown in the rendering. Additionally, these are internally illuminated, but they are exposed LED lights. So you'll see running through the middle of the V, that would be the LED neon lights, which are permitted within the master sign plan. Canopy edge signs, as this would be most similar to in its construction, is it is a channel letter sign. It is established on a raceway, which is two inches tall. Again, that is typical with the canopy edge signs that are installed on the top of canopies. And they are held up by aluminum posts on the rear of the sign. And these are usually limited in their visibility from the right-of-way or from the public. So staff is supportive of the proposed awning edge sign and the amendment to the master sign plan. This is a sign type that's not seen elsewhere within the district. And it creates, or contributes to the vibrancy of the district and creation of a high-quality neighborhood as established and as required within the neighborhood standards for the zoning district. Also included within this proposal are the canopy edge and projecting signs. It should be noted that without the awning edge sign, these two signs would be permitted to go straight to building permitting as they do meet the requirements listed in the master sign plan. So they are provided for reference and would require approval. But because of the awning edge sign, that's why they are before you tonight. So the canopy edge sign is designed similar to the awning edge sign. It is the same dimensions, 42 square feet. And it is also the reverse channel letters. And then the projecting sign, which is located on the east side of the black metal canopy. It is a five-square-foot projecting sign that hangs eight feet, seven inches in height, which meets the minimum, or the max, the minimum eight-foot clearance requirement. And it'll also be painted the metallic gray to match the canopy. So staff has reviewed this application to the applicable criteria and are recommending approval with one condition, and that would be that the awning edge sign is permitted only for this tenant. It would not apply to other tenant spaces within Block B. If another tenant were to come forward with this, they would have to come to Plan and Zoning Commission for approval. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions there may be for staff. Otherwise, our applicant is here to address your concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. On this case, we'll handle questions and comments together. As this is an administrative case and you gentlemen were not here at the beginning of the meeting, if I could have you stand and raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you. All right. Turning time over to the commission for, actually, applicant, do you have a statement that you'd like to make on this particular? Thank you. Turning time over to the commission for questions for both staff and the applicant.
I just had a quick question. Does the awning on the front cover the street number? Or can you see that just by walking or driving on the front?
So on the Bridge Park Avenue side, the left photo?
Yes.
So it would be back, be high, it would be closer to the entrance into the, the building. It would not be on the metal canopy. It's kind of hard to see. It's camouflaged.
Right. So is that, wow, now I have another question. Is that on the awning or is that on the, I thought it was on the surface of the building?
I would let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Can you clarify your question, please?
I guess my first question is, does it need, by the city, does your street numbers need to be seen by walking or driving by? Is that a?
And, and while I think the dialogue is, is educational, I don't think it has content to do with the master sign plan that we're asked to look at tonight. So
There's an elevation in the package with the signage right above the primary entry. It's not in these renderings. These were very preliminary from when we received approval before. So it's been developed. I can walk this over to you if that?
Yeah, if you could just hand it to staff and then. Thank you.
It's on the screen now.
All right.
Rebecca, I need his name.
Oh, I, I apologize. Could you?
I'm sorry. Randy Roberti, Cameron Mitchell Restaurants.
Thank you. Address?
390 West Nationwide Boulevard, Columbus, Ohio, 43215.
Thank you. Ms. Harder, any follow-up question?
Just to clarify, the number I'm seeing, you were just gonna ask, answer a second question, which was, it is, is this on the building? Is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Supalak?
Did you at all consider, the Riverside, the Riverside Drive side is, right, there's, I guess I'm going to, there's sort of vertical brick piers. You have a bunch of, you have a wealth of vehicular traffic, if not also pedestrian traffic walking parallel to you. Do you at all consider doing something potentially vertical on one of those brick piers?
Based on the scale of the space and the height of the building above, the, the signage that goes on the, the piers above would appear to be for a space above. I don't think it would relate very well to to the, the tenant space itself or the facade that we're, we're, we're working on. Couple pieces of information, if I could point out real quick as well, it's technically not an awning in the eyes of the definition. It is actual building footprint condition space below. There's walls with foundations and windows. It's a roof that's been disguised to look like an awning. If you recall, last time we, we came before you with this project and, and got approval, one of the goals was to make this addition feel less like an addition, less permanent, which is why the awning look was brought into that roof configuration. So to, in order to address that particular comment we received from you, we, we took it in an awning aesthetic, even though it is a roof, a permanent roof. That's correct. It's, it's a, yeah, membrane roof with a, a fabric, piece of fabric draped over it.
Mr. Way?
Again, this is getting down to the details, but I just want to be clear. So there's a, there's a bar that runs along the canopy that the letters are attached to, and it appears in the, in the rendering that you're, that bar is being colored to match the awning. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the support structure, it's basically a steel angle, piece of steel that runs across that we can mount to.
I was just noting that they weren't matching up, and I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Try and disguise it as much as possible.
Right, exactly. So that you're, what you're trying to do is make that bar blend into the canopy as opposed to be part of the sign, the letters.
That's exactly right. It blends in, goes away, and the letters just float.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Harder?
Concerning the letters too, on top of that, are you trying to put the letters with the different lines?
No, and what you're seeing.
Does that become confusing, or how, how, how do you?
The letters are disconnected from the lines. What you're seeing in this particular image on the screen right now isn't the actual pattern. The renderings that were in, at the beginning of the package are an actual reflection of the aesthetic. So I think that was a, a temporary graphic used by the sign company in order to produce that. It's, it's closer to what you're seeing here, or this, it's exactly what you see here. And we had submitted those, those samples previously. So the, the sign disconnects itself. It, it's a different scale. The letters are a different width than those repetitive lines, so they, they don't really relate. In a good way. There shouldn't be any confusion, confusion between the two.
Mr. Suplack?
And again, just for us, those renderings were previous, previous go-around, right? So they were earlier.
Exactly. It's been refined since.
We weren't evaluating quite so specifically, but I'm going to the, the sort of byline that's down on the face of the, face of the canvas there. That is not present in the current package.
That's correct. That was eliminated. We, we just pulled these back in for reference. It, it showed a more accurate picture of the, the full finished package and overall composition.
Separate question. On the chance that we, you know, there's a wealth of, we hope often, sometimes our, our plans and our designs are, are, work out perfectly, but on the chance that, that, that metal angle painted to match the, match the canopy, right, rhythm is somewhat obnoxious, I imagine you'd be very open to picking a color all the way up and, and going with it.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're not, anything we need to do to make this thing look great, we're going to do. If it turns out in an awkward fashion, we would, we would modify, definitely.
Got it. Separate question on the canopy signs itself, right? So there you have the same channel letters above, you have the byline on the edge of the canopy, then, then on the side, you, in lieu of going on the edge of the canopy again, you drop a box below.
That's correct.
Why so?
Couple reasons. It picks up the pedestrian scale. The two larger signs are more vehicular, which is the goal, right? You, you really want to make that entry pop. You want cars circulating by to know it's there, and guests as they're across the street walking towards it to, to realize that that's the primary entry in, in the building that you're going to. But as they approach, or if they're at the coffee shop circulating closer to the building, they need that sign dropped down from the canopy to, to really locate it there as well. Picture someone walking from Sweetwater towards this canopy. They would have no other indicator that this is Valentina's.
Thank you.
Mr. Way?
The, the canopy is, what kind of, explain to me the material of the canopy.
I'm sorry.
The canopy, what, what is the material?
The entry canopy or the one on the side?
The striped canopy.
The striped canopy. So it is a conventionally-framed roof and wall, a metal stud bearing. Metal studs up on the wall, metal studs at the slope you see there, with a membrane roof, plywood roof deck.
So the, the material of the, the striped material, is that a?
The striped material is a Sombra La Canvas awning fabric that is then draped over that roof system.
So where I'm going with this is the longevity of that material in terms of fading or whatever, and needing to be replaced, and then having the sign kind of then embedded in. I mean, how easy is it if you had to replace that material?
Pretty straightforward. I think it would be a one-for-one. Even if we have to pull the sign down for a day, put it back up, it's not overly complicated. It would be a relatively simple awning swap.
It's not one of the situations where we, well, we can't take it down and replace it because we'd have to.
No, I don't, I don't think that would be the case at all.
You'd want to maintain the, the quality and the, you know.
Exactly. It, it, you know, it's Cameron Mitchell Restaurants. At the end of the day, they're not going to let the restaurant get run down and, and worn out.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Harder?
I just had, on that same line, a couple different questions too about durability. One is about, with the winter and snow, I see it is as, at an angle, and then with lighting, do you anticipate any snow lingering up there that could be hazardous to some of your guests?
I don't foresee that as an issue. I think there is, the slope isn't incredibly steep from, from a first point, and it's very similar to most of these other canopy signs. Those are sloped as well. It's just concealed by a flat edge, the way that's detailed. So there's a slope on all these, and snowdrift happens behind the signs, whether they're sloped roof or not. Every parapet gets the snow built up, and every, every canopy has that built up behind it, potentially.
Now, the only call-out on that is most canopies, as, as we saw in the very beginning of the staff application, don't have letters blocking an edge of a slope. Have you done any investigation into, you know, now water's caught up, we have a warm day, it, it melts and then freezes because there's water accumulation?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you mind pulling up the section?
Let me go to it really quick. Just give me one, one moment.
The, as he's pulling this up, the, we'll call it the angle that the sign rests on, isn't flush down to the sheathing in the, the fabric. It's elevated. There's, there's a gap below it, so if the water runs free below it, just like a normal awning. Does that, does that answer your question? That's what I was headed towards with the section, but I think the, so you can see there in this, in this view, there's, there's a gap below that. Water will run free underneath of it. Snow will melt and run underneath of it, no differently than a typical awning.
Thank you. Mr. Suplack, did you have?
Just a real quick question. Help me understand if, if there is something that breaks on this awning, let's call it, would you be calling like Capital Awning, or would you be calling a different company that would have to come in who constructs things differently?
It would be our typical awning vendor, which is Capital City Awning.
And then staff, just for clarity, some of the renderings that we saw today had additional text on four signs of awnings I counted. So the Ristorante Bar, I don't remember what the third word was because I didn't write it down. Those would, thank you, pizza. Those would not be present on these awnings. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Applicant, that is your understanding as well.
That is correct. Those were in that early package, and they are not in this submission.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make public comment on this particular item? Any received on the web? All right. Thank you very much. All right, looking to the commission for deliberation on this application. We are asked to approve a master sign plan. This is not the first time we've seen the sign plan, but it does have a substantial addition. Mr. Suplack, could I start with you this evening?
I applaud, so it, it's an attractive set of signs. I specifically applaud really like where you're going on the construction of it as the sort of hollowed channel with the, with the exposed neon filament that will make for a nice moment, right? Some, some of the other things I think you're doing in the canopy with the lights, the sort of tivali lights dotting around it are attractive. I'm struggling with, I am struggling with the fact that it very much seems like it's a canopy, right, canopy topper, which it is. And then the same sign is replicated around the corner onto, onto the awning. On one hand, it is attractive, and it is a, a nice moment would be, would be vibrant, right? But I, I still worry and wonder if the better solution isn't a vertical sign on the brick pier, a couple piers down, right, that extend, kind of extends your space, because right now, all your signage is right at the corner as well. And of course, that, that vertical sign creates other nice moments. I don't know that that's definitive one way or another as much as it's generally where I stand at present.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Way?
When I first saw this, I thought, wow, that's very strange to have a, a sign like that on an awning. It just, it just caught me, and I had to really think about it. Now that I understand, and I, you know, read everything, and, and it is, this is going to be like a one-off kind of approval. So if you look up and down the street in Bridge Park, you've got several other restaurants that have edge signs, but they're not on awnings, right? So there's a consistency along the street of having edge signs. Fidot has one, and the other restaurant in between. So I think there's that consistency of edge signs along the street, although to Mr. Suplack's point, Z Kachina's sign is just a blade sign that comes out from a pier, which is just up the street. So I'm, I'm looking for kind of consistency a little bit. So I think there's an argument to be made that this provides a consistency along the street. And I think staff pointed out that this is kind of a unique, kind of something to make this corner special. And we've talked about this corner a lot. So I, I, I've kind of, I'm, I'm warming up to it. I think it's, it could be kind of really interesting. I think it's consistent. I think it's making this corner look a little special, and I think I'm, I'm supportive of, of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Schneer?
I generally find it easy to be critical, but I think it's great. I, I have, I think it's the right, look for the right corner where the bridge comes out. It's, it blends, but it's unique. It's inviting. It's, I think it's just what, the kind of energy that we're trying to get over there. So I applaud you. I have no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Ms. Harder?
Before coming, I was very concerned about how harmonious it was of the use of color, and if the stripes were going to be something positive. Seeing it more in the conversation, I am favorable of the tones that you're bringing. I like the art. I like the idea of bringing something of a surprise, but with consistency, and that blend that has to occur from place to place. And I would agree with staff, no one else should be doing, you know, this is a one-time, and then come again to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I, I also think we would have, be having a little bit different conversation if we were talking this in totality. And so I, I do appreciate the comment in the recommendation that this only be this tenant, that it not perpetuate. I do want to make a couple of comments just for, this is not probably the last time Cameron Mitchell will be talking to the city of Dublin. We, we do like to master plan. You heard the last application. We like to look at things in totality. One of the challenges with this, because it's a different type of use, the awning is asked to be an awning. The awning is asked to be structural, architectural, and the awning is asked to be a sign base. So when we have to piece and parse those out, then, right now, we're asked to look at the awning as just a backing. It's structural. But I think if we had looked at this in the beginning, the awning becomes the sign. So the, the entire awning then becomes the, the marquee for this particular corner. And then I doubt it would meet sign requirements as far as square footage and everything else. So I do appreciate very much the comment from staff in, in the sign package. And I, I'm still not perfectly comfortable. I do like the idea of the verticality, which I think could play, I mean, we look at North Market, that kind of cool-looking artistic sign that not only draws people, not only the, the point that you made earlier, you need to, you need to have the people know it's a restaurant. I think we do that with the awning. We do that with the windows. We do that with the dining scene through the windows. Yes, we know that it's Valentina's Dining by the sign, but I, I, I think that that's not necessarily needed for spoon-feeding. This is Valentina's Restaurant. I, I think it works well. I think it's cohesive. To Mr. Way's point, it is cohesive, and for that reason, I am generally supportive of it. Do you have any questions from us?
Not currently.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate and are looking very much forward to patronizing the business. And with that said, I will entertain a motion for approval of the master sign plan with a single condition.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Harder?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Miss Call?
Yes. Thank you. And again, we look forward to.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, last item on our agenda this evening, last case on our agenda this evening, the Corners Phase Two at PID 273-013223, 22-098 FTP for a final development plan. This application is a request for the construction of approximately 7,100-square-foot commercial building to accommodate a medical office tenant and a future commercial tenant. The site is a planned unit development. The Corners located northwest of the intersection of Rings Road with France Road. Ms. Mullinax, again, good to see you. I'll turn the time over to you for our case presentation.
Thank you, and good evening again. This case is for review and approval of a final development plan located within the Corners Development. So approval for a planned unit development is a three-step process, which is shown on your screen. The Corners Development has completed steps one and two, which includes a concept plan, rezoning of the site, and establishing the preliminary development plan as well as the development text. The applicant is requesting review and approval of a final development plan, which is the final step. And at this stage, the commission makes a determination based on the conformance with the preliminary development plan as well as the approved development text. The total area of the Corners is 13.5 acres and is highlighted in yellow, located northwest of the intersection of France Road and Rings Road. More specifically, the 1.48-acre site is proposed, is with the, the proposed development this evening, and is in subarea B2 located by the yellow star shown here. So to go over some case history, in 2018, the Daimler Group was the selected developer to partner with the city on the Corners Development, which led the site to be rezoned from O L R, which is Office Laboratory and Research District, to P U D, the Corners in 2019. This established the development to permit up to 70,000 square feet of commercial and office uses as well as a public park. And then in 2020, a final development plan was approved for a portion of Phase One, which included three commercial buildings in subarea B1, and then the public park in subarea subarea A. These are the existing conditions of the site. The left picture is looking west towards Cardinal Health and then the picture on the right is looking south towards Rings Road. Additionally, the existing conditions shown here are looking east in the picture on the left and then looking northeast in the picture on the right. I do want to point out in the image on the right, we can see the three commercial buildings, which were previously approved by the Commission in the distance. The shared use path under construction can be seen in both images, which circles the basin and is north of the proposed development. So the Corners development in total includes four subareas, which is outlined on the slide. Subarea A is shown in yellow and contains the basins, shared use paths, and a public park. Subarea B1 is shown in red and contains commercial uses along France Road. Subarea B2 is shown in green and contains the proposed development this evening for a dental office as well as a future tenant space. And then subarea B3 is shown in blue and contains future office space. With that, half of subarea B1 at the corner of France and Rings Road and subarea B3 have yet to be approved by the Commission and will subsequently have their own final development plan when development is proposed. Subareas B1, B2, and B3 are limited to a total 70% lot coverage across subarea B. So this makes this requirement cumulative as each subarea is proposed for development. The applicant is proposing a lot coverage of 52% for their lot. And the developed areas of B1 and the proposed area of B2 also total 52% lot coverage. So that leaves a remainder of approximately 72,873 square feet for the undeveloped and unapproved areas in subarea B, which shall not exceed the 70% maximum lot coverage. So the applicant has provided a proposed site plan, which indicates access is obtained from the existing private drive immediately east of the property, which provides access to Rings Road. The proposed building is shown with frontage along Rings Road and the parking lot is internal to the site between the proposed building and the public park. The density of the proposed building setbacks and minimum yard requirements are met. There are 28 parking spaces, which are required for this development. The applicant is proposing 38 parking spaces, which includes two handicap spaces. The development text requires all parking within subareas A and B to be shared, regardless of their use, including the adjacent park. Staff is supportive of the additional parking due to the shared parking requirements for this development. The applicant is required to provide cross-access easements for shared parking and public access to the open space in accordance with the development text and the infrastructure agreement. Lastly, existing sidewalks are on-site, which are highlighted here in green. The applicant is proposing sidewalks along the main entryway and additional entrances of the building, which is shown in the lighter green. The development text requires pedestrian connections to the park, shared use paths as well, which have not been provided. So staff is recommending two sidewalk connections, which are shown in the darkest green. And that just connects the sidewalk to the shared use pass as well as the public park. The code requires pedestrian lighting along all sidewalks, which the applicant has yet to provide. The applicant is utilizing the same building-mounted and site lighting approved by the Commission in subarea B1. And the applicant should continue to work with planning on their pedestrian path lighting and update their photometric plans subsequently. Lastly, the applicant will need to continue to work with engineering on stormwater management for the site and demonstrate compliance. With that, we'll move into the architecture. The proposed building and its primary building materials include board and batten and stone, which are consistent with the Commission and what they previously approved for subarea B1. Staff is supportive of the scale, the massing, and the amount of balanced finestration of the proposed architecture. The maximum building height in subarea B2 is 40 feet, which is met. Additional architecture features such as windows, canopies, and exterior lighting were previously approved by the Commission in subarea B1 and are shown here as well for this proposed development. The asphalt shingle roof material is permitted, but the applicant should revise this material to include a shingle weight that's over 325 pounds. And last, sorry. Lastly, the rooftop mechanical units will be screened by the building architecture. Moving on to the landscape plan. Landscape requirements within subarea B2 defer to the zoning code. And the applicant meets all landscaping requirements, including interior landscaping and screening for vehicular use areas, tree plantings, and foundation plantings. A condition of approval will be presented before the Commission, which requires all street trees be planted along the private access drive prior to the occupancy of the proposed building via written documentation from the developer. Staff is recommending that the applicant add additional foundation plantings to fill in these empty areas shown here surrounding the building and that they continue to work with staff to clarify any plantings which are not noted on the plan, in the plan list. The applicant is proposing thematic fencing, shown here in a dark blue, and landscaping along the Rings Road frontage to establish a nice entry feature to this development. This thematic fencing was also previously approved within subarea B1 by the Commission. And so the applicant is trying to provide some continuity throughout the development. Staff is recommending the vehicular screening hedge and tree treatment be implemented, shown here in red on the south side of the parking lot adjacent to the handicap parking. And that's to complete the vehicular screening for the whole parking area. And then lastly, two bike racks are required for this site. The applicant should clarify the location of the proposed bench as well as the bike racks, as there's a discrepancy between them on the site plan and where these items are located. And so with that, staff recommends that the bike racks be located closer to the shared use path, which is close to the western property line, and that the proposed bench location be shown closer to the building between the two tenant spaces. The development text includes a sign regulation and guidelines document, which serves a similar purpose to a master sign plan. The applicant is required to obtain approval of any proposed signs from the developer as well as the architect, which the applicant has provided in advance of the meeting tonight. The applicant is proposing a 26-square-foot canopy-edge wall sign facing Rings Road as well as an eight-square-foot wall sign above the main entry. The proposed signs meet the development text requirements, except for the height of the canopy-edge sign facing Rings Road is not noted on the plans. And so the applicant should continue to work with planning to revise that and just show that height requirement is met. This is a closer look of the primary building tenant signs. Additionally, the application includes a proposed wall sign location for a future tenant adjacent to the main entry, which is shown in yellow. The future tenant sign will be required to meet the approved development text, sign design, and is subject to staff approval. A condition of approval has been added for the Commission's consideration so that this future tenant sign could be approved administratively by planning. All FTP criteria are either met with conditions or are not applicable. And with that, planning recommends approval of the final development plan with 10 conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions in the applicants in attendance this evening. Thank you.
On this application, we'll handle questions for the applicant and for staff together. If the applicant's here, would you like to come forward? If you have a statement you'd like to make first, otherwise we'll jump into questions.
If I can have you state your name and address for the record and the button on the bottom of the microphone, if you could press. Yes, sir.
So the architect, well, first of all, my name is Vance Thornton. The company is Advance Construction Incorporated, and we're located at 9313 Lake of the Woods Drive in Galena, Ohio.
Thank you.
Want her to?
Yes, please.
My name is Teg.
Oh, you don't have to hold it down. His wife got diagnosed with pancreatic cancer at the end of January of this year, and she's just went back to the James for the number of time, and they just told her today that there's nothing else that they can do and basically sent her home to pass away within the next few days. So the architect and the applicant could not make this meeting. So I'll do the best I can. I'm the general contractor, construction manager. I'm not an architect. I do have EMHNT here with me, a representative from them, if you have any questions for the civil side of things. And then Dr. Asani and I will try to answer any questions you guys have for the development.
Thank you very much. All right, looking to the Commission, one item of note, just to call out, as I look at it, you know, conditions kind of make us nervous occasionally. 10 is a number of them, but by my count, I see two that are due to the cross nature of this, where we're master planning and this is an infill. I see two conditions there. I see five that are related to landscaping. And I see two that are just normal considerations. If we want to put the roof shingle weight in there, that's a third one. So that being said, if we have commission questions from the Commission for either staff or applicant, we will start there. Mr. Way.
I'm going to start with circulation and maybe, hopefully, I'm not asking a question out of order, but the entrance into the parking that was moved from the earlier concept, right? I just wondered, I wanted to understand the rationale for doing that.
Yeah, I can expand upon that. So the entrance to the site itself from the private drive, it does deviate from the preliminary development plan, but staff is supportive because the access that was shown on the preliminary development plan was on the corner of that private drive and makes it really challenging for a fire truck to be able to maneuver the site and get into for safety reasons. So with that, staff is supportive of it being more centrally located on that parking from the private drive.
Thank you. That was one. So in your presentation, you had a drawing up that had a purple box on it, had to do with landscaping consistency. Could you just explain that to me again?
Yes, let me pull that up really quick so we can reference that.
Yeah, the purple box that was right before there.
That one?
No, the one before. That one.
That one, okay. Yes, so from a staff perspective, we are recommending that the same treatment for the vehicular use perimeter screening and the trees are replicated next to the handicap spaces, just to complete that vehicular screening from all angles as much as possible.
Okay, I'm following you and I think that whole corner of the parking lot up to the building probably would fall in the same category. In addition, that you're extending the walk up to the, so I think that starts to change the character of that area. So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm asking questions right now, so I'm not going to make any statements. I have a question for the applicant. On your signage, it's a, your typeface or your copy is Dental Reflections Dublin. Is it important for you to say Dublin? Because is that part of, I mean, you're in Dublin. We know, so do you have to say Dublin? I'm just curious. Pardon me? Yeah, is it part of the business name? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the Commission? Mr. Suplack?
Question more for staff, I suppose. And I don't know the answer. I legitimately don't know the answer to this. Is the dumpster in the right location?
Yes, the dumpster is in the correct location. There are no issues with it regarding its location and applying that back to the development text. The applicant is proposing to utilize stone wall, which is shown on the building, as well as the same board and batten material for the gate, as well as screening the dumpster with landscaping, just for awareness.
Thank you.
Mr. Way.
I forgot the most important one. Back to your presentation, the walkway connection going to the north from the parking lot. You didn't recommend anything in the parking lot to receive people like an island. And if you could pull that up, if you look at the layout of the parking, there's space on the east and west corners where you could pull the parking to the west and pull the parking to the east and pick up an island where you have the walk proposed, which isn't on this drawing, but. So I guess I'm asking, would that be possible? I don't know if there's a layout issue with the parking lot that you couldn't do that.
Yes, I think I would defer to the applicant on that, but I do just want to mention one quick thing. The preliminary development plan does show this parking all the way up against the existing sidewalk, which is running east to west here. So with that, essentially, the applicant has elected to bring back the parking lot. So staff is recommending a sidewalk connection. I would defer to the applicant in terms of the choice to pull that back further.
Can you pull up the graphic where you added that walk on the north side? That one. So I'm saying where that dark green line, if you could pull an island into the parking lot there by pushing the parking three feet to the north and pulling it three feet to the, I'm sorry, to the east and west, so you get like a six-foot island in there or something. I'm just, is that, would that be possible?
I believe that would be possible, but I would defer to the applicant as.
I'm trying to keep my statements in terms of questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice. Other questions for staff or the applicant at this time? Mr. Schneer.
Have you reviewed the conditions and are they acceptable, if they are acceptable to us?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none, is there anyone in public comment, in the public who would like to make comment? Or have we received any public comment during the duration of the meeting? Seeing none? All right, we will turn this over into deliberation. Mr. Schneer, would you mind starting us off this evening?
I had some not atypical comments on the, on the conditions, but I shared them, so I won't belabor them here. I commend you. I think the plan complements what we've approved thus far in that, in the area. The materials are interesting, but they complement what we've seen, what we've approved thus far. So I'm generally supportive of the conditions. There was a couple that I think just needed some clarification. So I may need to come back to them when we see them.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Suplack?
I concur. It's an attractive building. It's well-thought-out. It's making good use of the site generally, right? It's lovely work. There are a number of small touches, I think, that add up, i.e. the connection to the, the connection to the pathways that are going all past the building will add up. And of course, then, once you do certain things like that, then the bike rack location becomes obvious in the larger scheme of things. So I think there's a number of things there, including if that sidewalk is connecting to the parking lot, well, that. including if that sidewalk is connecting to the parking lot, well, that sort of demands, I think, what Mr. Way is starting to articulate, and that you just slide some of those parking spaces a little bit to make a, make a walkway for it, a plank for it to arrive at the parking lot. I am very on board with my sense from the rendering, both renderings, and renderings never do landscaping justice, but also the landscaping plan, that I worry that this building is a little light on landscaping around the foundation in particular, so I applaud all of those by staff in the, in the, in the conditions. Wasn't advocating for anything relative to the dumpster, I was just legitimately wondering where else we might like to put it, is that the right location? There is a path that wanders by that, by that quite closely, and of course, that, you know, we all get a whiff of the dumpster from time to time. Good, bad, or indifferent. I don't know that I had a whole lot past that. There is, the stone is, is an attractive thing, it's kind of, goes, goes pretty goldy, kind of, kind of with a red tone. I'm not averse to that, I just, maybe this is a question at this point, more so than anything else. I wouldn't be averse to something slightly lighter in the buff tones either, just FYI. The other buildings on the site also incorporate a good bit of white around some of the openings, not necessarily advocating for that, just calling it out, right? Your, your architecture and your materials very much are in agreement, your palette is slightly different. Good, bad, or indifferent in that regard. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Way.
Thank you. So, I also, I think the staff report was great, I think you picked up a lot of the things that I was concerned about, again, the lightness of the landscape, especially as you look at the renderings around the base of the buildings, it just, it just, you know, building coming down to ground, so I think the additional landscaping is good. I go back to where you're suggesting they put the bike rack, that's the area where I think that should also be kind of a landscaped area, and the bike rack should be part of it, and then you have the pathway extension going towards the, whatever direction that is, towards the top of the drawing, and in connecting into the path, I think that's all great. And then, again, I would advocate for this receptor in the parking lot to pick up the walkway going to the north, it doesn't, you know, as wide as the pathway is something, and I think you've got wiggle room to do that. I also noted the plant material that was labeled but not on the plant list, and I had a question about that, but I think you're on top of that. I also, as I went through the plant list, knowing that the, I was thinking the landscaping, while it was meeting code, was still a little light, a lot of it was perennial, and I was really concerned that there's a winter, summer kind of look to it, and I don't have problems with the perennials, but I think as, as staff works with the applicant to expand the landscape, I'd like to see more evergreen plant material, so that it balances out the perennials. And I think that, those were all the comments that I had.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Harder.
I appreciate my colleagues' thoughts. I had a couple of, I think the project looks wonderful, I think that it complements the new development that's down the street from it, as well as I am in favor of following all the conditions that staff has put, and I hope that this will be a great opportunity for you all.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. I concur with my fellow commissioners, the only items that I wanted to call out, we're not typically pro extra parking, but I think it's completely appropriate in this location, so I have no, no concerns there. I also am a little concerned with the, the walkway, and, you know, I'm sitting here sketching on a piece of paper while I'm doing this, and the walkway that goes, Ms. Mullenax, could I have you bring up?
The wiggly one?
That one, yes, the wiggly pedestrian way within the site plan, where the landscaping needs to be massaged there by the person entrance, so where that kind of Nebraska shape is, you have a curvy walkway that is just above that area, especially with the use, this is dentist office, you know, I know that my kids, when they were in the dental chair, occasionally it would be 20, 30 minutes before they were done, and there's not a lot of area back there in the chair. It would be nice to go outside and walk around a path a little bit while the kid's getting the dental treatment. So, if we took the walking path and just splintered it, so it wishbones, you know, it just kind of curves, and your door, your entrance is right there, it kind of natural makes sense, and then the landscaping around it makes a little more sense, the bicycle rack placement then kind of has a home, because it's adjacent to the, the actual pedestrian way. So, just a couple of callouts, and again, I don't think these are any conditions that need to come back to us, working with staff is appropriate. The only other item, and I think staff is getting sick of hearing me say this, but especially in this location where your parking lot, where the drive aisle is, is circular, it would be nice to call out where snow stacking would be. And so, you have accessible parking right there by that landscaped area that we were just talking about, the dumpsters in the back corner, and the two front corners are, well, that's, that's parking, and that's kind of your ingress egress, so we're kind of figuring out where snow stacking is going to be, and making sure that that's not on top of, you know, evergreens or other landscaping that would be negatively impacted, because those corners kind of, say, to someone who's not, who's looking to just drive a snowplow and not looking at preserving a beautiful area, you know, hey, I'm easy here because there's no car. So, calling out where that might be located, especially in the circular areas, I think is to our advantage. Other than that, I think the site is beautiful, the architecture is very well done, the signs, especially the size are complementary to the size of the building, I have no concerns with, with the future sign being delegated to staff, and ultimately, I think it's exactly what we were looking for in the area, and we certainly look forward to seeing the business in Dublin, so, thank you. Any final questions or comments from staff? Mr. Way.
This drawing did get pulled up, and now I'm sitting there looking at the light that's in the parking lot that's standing there by itself.
Okay.
Have they treated, how are they treating the base of that light in relationship to the parking? I know that we've had some discussions in the past about that being protected, or, you know, being in a planting, so I guess I'm wondering if.
Could it be moved to the parking island as well? I guess.
That's what I'm asking. Could it be just shifted into the?
So, on your screen here, the applicant is proposing to match the lighting that was previously approved for the development in B1, so that's shown here, but if the commission would like to recommend moving lighting, I don't think it's the type of lighting, it's the placement of the lighting, placement, okay.
And if you could pull up that site plan again, because it's not in front of me, I can't, is it possible, just, you're saying, does that mess up the foot candles?
Well, I mean, they, their photometric is here, yeah, so to the point of, there's a point that, I think.
The question is, can you pull it into the island, so that you don't have that pole exposed in a parking lot, where people are hitting it constantly? So, I guess that's a photometric issue? Or do you just?
If that could be rerun, and we could make sure that there are no issues with that, if that's what the commission would like.
That's all you have.
All right, so, as I have it, and looking to the commission for confirmation on this, I have a request for two additions to conditions, one of them, maybe just an amendment to an existing condition with the evergreen plant material, and the other one, work with staff on lighting placement, ensuring protection from the base of lighting, and if it can be moved into the island.
Is that already covered relative to, there's, there's a condition about walkway lighting? Is it a light, is that written as?
This is parking lot lighting.
Site lighting in general?
It could be modified, I suppose.
Pedestrian lighting walkways throughout the site, revise photometric plan to ensure foot candle requirements.
I think we could add to that, I think we could say that they need to add that pedestrian light, lighting, and then relocate the fixture, the fixture in the parking lot to one of the islands, and then, because they're going to have to revise this photometrics plan anyway to deal with that, so then we could make sure that that's met.
Light poles in parking lots get beat up. Light poles in parking lots get beat up.
So, we're trying to protect your light pole and modify condition number five, that talks about lighting already, and ask that you work with staff to move the light pole from a freestanding just on the parking lot to an actual landscape median, so that it's protected from vehicular traffic.
Yeah, you're moving it.
The other is the island in the, the additional island would be the other?
Do we want to make that a hard condition? Do we want to work with staff to see if it's feasible? I don't know if the, if the requirement for the, if the request for the additional island were for pedestrian traffic that would have been mitigated by the corner cut.
But we're now requesting a path that just ends in a.
I, I think you, I think you modify number one, relative to the sidewalk.
Right, right, that's, that, it would be related to that.
Wherever the sidewalk condition already exists.
Right, and something about, yeah.
Work with staff.
Extending into the parking lot.
Is that number one?
Could you clarify that a little bit more than for number one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Number one's actually, number one actually only articulates the sidewalk extension on the west side, that connection on the west.
And then it also discusses, then, how to connect the parking lot to the public path on the other side, so that's meant to address two condition, two situations, not condition.
Oh, what about pedestrian circulation, work with staff to ensure pedestrian circulation throughout the development?
Okay.
Is the commission supportive of that? Seeing, yep, counted four, I'm good. Okay, so we have modification for the sidewalk, we have the evergreen plant material, we have the lighting, is there a consensus on the island? Additional? Yeah, I think they're still working on them. So, we do have one item that is under consideration, that's been proposed, that there be a condition added, could you clarify? I don't want to put words in your mouth on what the, what the goal is.
I think we might have, Mr. Way, did we cover it? If we're.
We just add it to one, because it says.
But is, is the goal circulation, or is the goal an additional island?
What's really, it's not an island, it's, it's a pedestrian, it's literally bringing the sidewalk into the parking lot, so you don't have to.
I think we, we covered that with circulation.
But adding another island.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, where we're, we're adding that new one to the north, it would come into the parking lot as a pathway, right? So, it's a concrete.
I don't know that, I don't know that the applicant had agreed to that. So, we apologize, we don't normally create and draft from the dais, but, but we're trying to be expeditious tonight and get you.
Could you articulate the evergreen clarification?
Uh, work with staff on the landscaping plantings to ensure a balance between deciduous and evergreen plantings.
So, just generally for the site, so we would add, so what we did was with that condition number?
New condition?
Six, we added.
Modification.
Letters underneath, like, we sub, subdiv, there's a lot of things as part of six, so we just, so we would add then a fifth one that would say to work, to modify, to ensure a balance of evergreen and deciduous plantings, is that what you're suggesting? Can you put that up there so we can see?
I think it's actually covered, so long as we have the, the meeting minutes tonight with the last statement, make appropriate substitutions if that is not an appropriate planting material, whether that's not appropriate because of the balance, lack of evergreen, I think we're covered with the existing condition, I don't think that.
Well, it could say add additional evergreen foundation plantings to fill in the areas surrounding the buildings.
But they will have the meeting minutes from tonight for directions.
I mean, it makes it clear if it's a condition, to be perfectly honest, so as opposed to that, if you're okay with that.
Mr. Schneer, could you, the wordsmithing is up there, so.
Can you show that number six?
We all have our very specific talents, and so we try to utilize those as much as possible.
Get to it? Okay.
The one we just added there, six E, is that, you want to be that specific?
Is it perennials, or is it supposed to be deciduous?
It should just, the perennials are already there. I'm saying it just add more evergreens, yeah, so you can drop the perennials, but again, it's a.
Supplement the balance with.
With more, with more evergreens.
With more evergreen.
Yeah.
And looking to the applicant, just to make sure, well, the substitute for the applicant, to make sure that these items broadly are acceptable as we're modifying them, if you'd like to read through these, they're projected on all of the screens, and we won't ask you right this second.
We had that discussion on these 10 items before the meeting, and Dr. Sani's okay with the 10 items.
Wonderful, thank you. Now, we are making minor modifications, we will come back and. All right, the conditions one through five are presented on the screen, if the commission will please read through those and ensure that the first five meet the criteria for, for your review.
On number five, I think you just say island, not islands, just to clarify that.
Sorry, because we struck planning in item number three, can we strike planning in item number five and substitute with staff? Stepping on your toes, Lance.
Consistency, consistency is the hobgoblin of small minds.
We want to make sure Mr. Hendershot's included.
Making a T-shirt.
Yes.
I mean, anything with, anything with hobgoblin in it, 10 points for Mr. Schneer.
All right, any further requirement to look through one through five? Otherwise, we will move on to six through 10.
I'm, I, I'm the one who separated six into all these, into the sub clauses, but does everybody understand and make appropriate substitutions, should that not be inappropriate planting material? What is appropriate? Who just?
So, again, we have our arborist zoning inspector in our office that reviews this, so once we would have the information about what that is, again, if it's a deciduous planting, and it should be an evergreen, that's, that's the intent behind that, that it would just be making sure it meets the requirement.
As long as everybody knows.
Yes.
My guess is those are both taxes of some sort, so they're evergreen.
Has the commission had an opportunity to review all of the conditions with the modifications made? Seeing head nods, has the applicant had opportunity to read through the modifications as made to the conditions? Is there any concern with the?
We're fine with them.
Thank you. Then I am looking to the commission, I will entertain, well, again, making sure, no public comment, I will entertain a motion to approve the final development plan with 10 conditions as modified this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Harder?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Harder? Yes.
Thank you very much for your patience this evening. Oh, please, please wish him for us best wishes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are coming to the end, do we have any, any discussion, any communication this evening?
Just a couple of quick things, thank you all for attending last night and participating, I thought that was a great discussion, I hope you all did too, that was always nice to get together and hear what everybody has to say, so appreciate everybody taking the time to do that, meeting back-to-back meetings, which is challenging. I also wanted to share with you that we are looking at an opportunity to provide your digital materials in a different way. So we're looking at some, hopefully, a little bit more user-friendly way to get your digital materials. I know OneDrive has been a challenge for us, so we're working through that. We hear you. I know, we just got Kim fixed up here, but we'll... Should be better, so... Anyway, so just know that that's in the works for everyone, sanity. And then, obviously, with Nikki's departure, that leaves a little hole. And we also, then, Zach was recently promoted to a planner, too. So we're hiring a planner once. Sorry, he's hiding behind you because he's going to end the live stream here in a second. But so we have two vacant positions. So in the interim, till we get these filled, we are working with some consultant help. So you may see some new faces, which we'll make sure to introduce you because they'll be coming to help present some cases, given our caseload. So just be aware of that. And then, if you have any assistance or need any assistance and you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me directly. I know Nikki was your contact, but in the interim, I'm happy to answer. And if I don't have time, I'll definitely make sure somebody else can get back to you as soon as possible. But just never shared who you should call if you have a problem. So always call me. So other than that, I have nothing else.
Well, thank you, Jenny. I think that the joint meeting last night was very, very helpful. It is difficult to do back-to-back-to-back evening meetings, but it was worth it. So thank you to all who attended. Mr. Way?
I have one other item. So there is the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Planning Conference coming up. We talked about conferences last night. And at that conference, there's actually a commissioners' training session specifically. It's like a half-day thing, I think.
Okay, we can send some info.
I just raised that as, again, it's an educational opportunity. It's in Louisville, Kentucky.
What are the dates?
What's that?
The dates again, sorry.
It's the 29th and 30th of September?
Potentially. I closed my computer, sorry. But I'll send an email to the group and we can provide when that session is, how that would work. Typically, that's handled through the clerk's office. So but that's, I believe that's over maybe a weekend day, so you could potentially attend, so...
And then calendar? Are we going to do meetings for future in September? If we can have that on our agenda, just to make sure that we're good through March? And then open meetings? Is that March-April time period? I feel like it's been... They're not my favorite thing, but I do feel like it's been probably a year since I have.